Actually, time to start the July City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission. Would you please read the roll?
Mr. Fountain?
Here.
Mr. Francis is absent. Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Self?
Here. Do we need a motion to excuse our missing gentleman? Unless he shows up, then we'll unexcuse him.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to excuse Mr. Francis.
I second.
And we'll do that by general consensus?
Agreed.
Very much. Okay, agenda. Staff, anything addition? Any additions, corrections, or withdrawals?
No, sir.
No? Okay. Need to agenda approval? Motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the agenda.
I second that.
And we'll do that by general consensus. Thank you very much. Since we didn't have a June meeting, we have minutes from the May meeting, our last one, to approve. Any changes, corrections? Are we all good?
Good, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve the seven May Planning Commission meeting minutes.
I second.
Thank you.
I was not here, so I will abstain.
You will abstain, so we still pass three zero. Okay. This evening's meeting, we have two public hearings and a subdivision. Before we start the public hearings, just to let you know, the way they work is that the applicant will first make a presentation, and then staff will make their report. At that point, we will open the floor to public input. Please limit yourself to three minutes, if you would. And once everyone has had a chance to speak, we'll ask for any written input that has come wafting in in the last thirty days. Then we will close the public hearing, we will discuss it among ourselves, and vote. So without any further ado, let's go with PUD 25-3, Seven Brew Rezoning.
This is case number PUD 25-3 on an application filed by Commercial Site Acquisitions Incorporated, 250 Civic Center Drive, Suite 500, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. The application requests approval to rezone 0.64 acres from B2 Community Business District to a CPUD Commercial Planned Unit Development. The property is located at 3919 Colonel Glenn Highway, further described as Book One, Page Nine, Parcel 44 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. And I'll bet we have somebody here representing the applicant.
Yes, good afternoon, good evening. My name is Jonathan Woker. I'm a planner with McBride-Dale Clarion, representing Casto on this application. I have a brief summary. As you know, we are requesting a zone change to CPUD for the property at 3919 Colonel Glenn Highway. This is for a property that's currently zoned B2. It's an existing sales lot for vehicles, used car lot. It's approximately 0.64 acres. Proposed use would be for a coffee drive-through for a Seven Brew coffee use. Commercial Site Acquisition, Inc., also Casto, is the proposed developer, and then Seven Brew is the user. And my name is at the bottom there. This is an aerial that shows the property. We're on the south side of Colonel Glenn Highway. We also have frontage on Germany Lane. So it's at the southeast corner of Colonel Glenn Highway and Germany Lane. We have submitted a survey. There's an existing building on the property that's used for the used car sales operation. If approved, that would be removed. And this is a proposed plan that shows the proposed Seven Brew coffee shop. This would have two drive-through lanes. We have twelve parking spaces. We have a circulation pattern that would enter from the southern driveway on Germany Lane and then exit at the northern driveway. I think it's important to also recognize, we have no access proposed on Colonel Glenn Highway. So we recognize that's a higher traffic volume, but our intent would be to close existing curb cuts on that main road. We also have a trash enclosure that will be at the south part of the site. We have no objections to the proposed staff conditions recommending approval. We think this is a plan that's consistent with the land use recommendations of your comprehensive plan, and we also think this is a good redevelopment opportunity that'll be complementary to the other services in the area. So that completes my presentation. I will try and answer questions when you have them.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Colin Carville. I'm the city planner here. And once again, this case is for Seven Brew, a rezoning. If, I'll take you a couple months back here, we had a rezoning case for a Valvoline oil change, kind of in that similar area. The intent from staff was to try and mirror a lot of those standards with this new PUD, try and keep things very similar along that same stretch of highway there. So you'll see a lot of similarities between the two staff reports, but I will dive in. Jonathan had a great presentation, so I won't try to double up on a lot of what he said. So, once again, we are requesting, they are requesting a rezoning of .64 acres from B2 Community Business to a commercial PUD to make way for a Seven Brew coffee shop. There is also a Seven Brew coffee shop that was, I believe, approved last year near the Mall Fairfield Commons off North Fairfield Road on the east side of that development. So, important, this is kind of the first step of a longer process in rezoning, so we'll kind of keeping things specific to the uses here tonight and some of those conditions that we outlined. A lot of the access points, how the site is configured, that was provided. That'll be discussed at that Phase Two, as indicated in my presentation here. So we'll try and limit that discussion here tonight, and more focus on the lot itself with the uses, and see if they're compatible with that. Just to get our bearings here, the southern star on this map is where we're at this evening. That northern star on the tip-top of the screen there is where this proposed coffee shop will be. Just another look at that site. As you can see, it's a used car lot. Definitely a lot of cars there, not much organization there. So we're hoping with kind of the new development that's going on this stretch will be, I guess, a visual improvement to that area. So this is just a look at our zoning map here. This indicates that that lot is currently zoned B2, and that's the star just indicating that's the lot that we're looking at this evening. So, once again, going from B2 to CPUD, the drive-through, a restaurant drive-through service only, that would be a permitted use within a B4 district. That B4 district is modeled after a lot of the uses that you'll find in the resolution here this evening. So we thought that the B4 Highway Business District was kind of most compatible with a CPUD as far as mirroring kind of the standards that we were envisioning for that area. We've excluded thirty-five various uses found in that B4 Highway Business that would be permitted or conditional use there, simply because it's a very unique lot, kind of a triangle, if you will, very small in nature. So it's very limited in what we can put there. So things that were just immediately, we couldn't envision it going there, we excluded. I'm sure we might discuss some more here this evening. But I thought the thirty-five that we crossed off was a great starting point as far as what would be possible there. Those were, are indicated through a red strike through in the attached resolution. And similarly, our land use plan, it calls for regional commercial office in this area. And some of the key characteristics of that is to provide full range and variety of all aspects of commercial activity. It's near major department stores, which is, it's near the Mall of Fairfield Commons, as well as, you know, having that access to Wright-Patt and Wright State. It'll definitely be a highly trafficked location, and I think provide a good restaurant for the area there. And we've looked at this conceptual already. Once again, this is very subject to change. There are already some concerns that Randy and I have talked about, but we'll, you know, discuss that at a future date if this were to move forward. But as for the rezoning itself, staff is recommending approval, subject to those six conditions that we outlined. And happy to answer any questions after public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to let you all know, before we open the public hearing, what we are doing tonight is looking at the rezoning, not, don't pay any attention to the site plan. That's not real. We are simply looking at this to rezone this from B2, which is neighborhood business, a small business, to a commercial planned unit development. We will look at this site presuming approval by us and City Council, and if this goes forward, we will have another presentation and another voting on the specific site plan. So, with that caveat, if you have questions or comments about the rezoning, please feel free, step forward and take your three minutes. Don't be shy. I guess nobody is here for this particular public hearing. Did we have any written input? No written input. Last chance? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and I will start on my left this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. They have one question for the applicant, and then a couple of questions for Colin. So Jonathan, could you come up again? So in your submittal to the Planning Department, you talk about the current passive volume, I'll say, to Germany, which, knowing how successful the Seven Brew is on North Fairfield Road, I anticipate nothing but better for the Germany and Colonel Glenn Highway, which is going to drive a higher volume of traffic. Have you done, on your own, since we haven't done it yet, any preliminary traffic counts to how much more traffic you're going to be driving, or are you going to wait till they finish with Valvoline, then drive down to you to get the coffee?
Well, I'm not sure which order they'll go, coffee or oil change, oil change or coffee, but we do think we're complementary use there. We actually believe that this site will relieve some of the high volumes that we see at the North Fairfield. That's an extremely successful site. It's in the top percentage of their operations, and is in large part why we're seeing a second location here. So we think that this store will have a more normal volume, whereas the one on North Fairfield has a high volume. Having said that, we think that the site circulation with access coming from Germany and the amount of stacking that we have on the site will satisfy what the city is going to require.
Yeah.
We have not done a traffic study. I'm not sure that one is required, but we'll work.
Yeah. I just wondered if you might have done some traffic counts at all, but that's all.
Other than general marketing, and I don't, I'm not privy to that, I know that Seven Brew has evaluated the site and is confident this is going to be a good location. But again, they feel it's going to absorb a fair amount of the customers that are at North Fairfield, so they won't have to drive by this location to get to that, and so it'll be more, kind of balance both out.
Closer to the base, so the coffee stays hotter, so.
Good point. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you. I've got an engineering-related question, which may end up in Phase Two, but I want to ask it now. So either Colin or Randy? So given the helpful comments that the gentleman representing Seven Brew gave, so even though it's this, we're in Phase One and not in Phase Two, and they'll get into the detailed site plan, the benefit we'll all gain by them closing off the curb cuts of Colonel Glenn Highway is tremendous, eliminating any potential traffic there, which is dumping more traffic on Germany, which means vehicles going in and out of Seven Brew will come in one of the two ways, either the way they have it, or another way.
Right.
But they're going to come in there, and there is a traffic signal twenty feet away. And when and at what point would we start doing traffic study to know that if they leave it like the site plan, which they don't, it's just we're in Phase One right now, I understand, but if they leave it that way, and all those cars getting their coffee and are now leaving, they're going to turn to that traffic signal right there with the traffic that's already on Colonel Glenn waiting to go, at what point would we say, is that an uncommon or awkward load for that signal which wasn't designed for that level of traffic?
Right. So our engineering team, once we get to the site plan stage, they'll evaluate all those access points, and ultimately it'll be their call on if that proximity is good enough for them as far as safe ingress egress near the site. So that would be determined when we get the actual site plan.
To Phase Two, then.
Exactly.
And that would include then stacking from, departing from Seven Brew.
Stacking will be a huge part of that.
Highly successful, as it is.
Absolutely, yeah.
The other question related to, so they're driving by there a lot, and the Krug Motors that are now, that is a section much like we have elsewhere in the city, like where there's widening going on in North Fairfield, where the utilities are raised. Would something like this, now that we have Valvoline and potentially could have Seven Brew, and who knows what else people on that site, that this becomes an opportunity for engineering to look at burying the utilities as part of the whole development process of that section to further make that whole area safer?
Sure.
At what point would we look at that as a?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not privy to if that's an initiative in that area that engineering's looking at right now, but certainly something that will be evaluated, I imagine, as the site.
So we would not, as a Planning Commission, bring up something as a suggestion? Thank you, Steve. Okay, that was my questions. Thank you, Colin.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Just a question for you. Did we, are you talking about the light that was south, or I guess that's?
There's two, there's two lights.
They took one out.
They did. I was just there yesterday, and that light was still there.
You're talking about the one by Sonic?
The one on the corner of this property, on the west.
On the west side.
Is now removed.
Right. If there is anything.
It was still there yesterday.
Blinking, it might be a blinking.
Well, I went, because I wanted to verify, that's what the point of my whole questions were. If we're going to be leaving a traffic signal at that corner, not privy to what Jonathan just said, that could be a potential traffic situation.
Well, I know that there's one at Zink.
Well, there's one at Zink. That's a regular one.
But the one in Germany Lane, I think it's closed.
Yeah.
Okay. It was there yesterday, whether it was operation or not.
It might have been turned off. I mean, it's been there forever, and I know that there was a push last year to get it removed because of just trying to encourage more traffic to use the Zink Road access point.
Well, that would, that would further be feeding info into the situation at that corner, should the site plan carry any of the remainder, should it get passed, because that would be a concern of the success of Seven Brew dumping on that little tiny corner and wanting to turn left to go to the base.
I would, I would imagine anybody wanting to turn left would tend to go out towards Zink.
Go back up to Zink.
Yeah, you get that traffic.
Ever had to estimate an Air Force worker at 6:45 in the morning? I'm just telling you. So, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you, Jonathan.
One question for Colin. I'll be honest, I don't know if this is truly related to rezoning, but I know in, yeah, this aerial, oftentimes we work with the applicants to like remove the boundary from the middle of the road and give that right-of-way to the city. Is that something that we're planning on doing with this?
Something we'd have to evaluate at a later time. Yeah, I don't have an answer for you right now, Jonathan. I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
I don't think I have any questions at this stage. I think I'll reserve those for when we get to, should this be approved of the specific site plan?
Good. Just, just a couple of things, and I'm not going to site plan, so no worries. In going through the permitted use list before, there's some that were not lined out that is no way they're going to be on a six-tenths of an acre parcel, like a bowling alley or a skating rink. So there's some other, there are about a half a dozen that I found just on a quick look that simply don't apply. And I would suggest, gentlemen, that we might want to, since I can't make the motion, I can pass this to one of you all, but quickly, agricultural implement sales, appliance retail, bowling alleys, dance halls, department stores, dry cleaning establishments that actually do the dry cleaning on-site, funeral services and crematory services, HVAC repair, landscape contractor, engineering research and prototype development, commercial truck driving school, shooting range, skating rink, towing service, and that's it. So suggest that we might want to pull those off, simply because they're impractical or impossible on a six-tenths of an acre parcel, regardless of how it's zoned. And it will just, in the future, it'll keep somebody from trying to do something dumb.
Sure. We definitely, definitely understand, we try and keep things not as narrow as possible, but, but some of those that you outlined, and if there's a majority, I don't think we're going to push back on that.
Okay.
We, we did with the Valvoline in March, I do remember the bowling alley coming up, because it was the same situation. I think that was struck.
Right.
So could we just make this consistent with what was approved then?
What else was?
We actually, we actually struck through more on this go-around than the Valvoline, so.
Right, because it's a smaller parcel.
You'd be trimming it much more.
It's odd shape, and it's a smaller parcel. So it's up to you, gentlemen. And that's really all I have. I'm sorry? You got a second? Oh, yes, please.
Jonathan Woker again. I was keeping track of the list that you were listing.
Mm-hmm.
I think the only one I would like to ask you to reconsider, department store, discount store, I don't know that that's our plans, but I think that's a category that still could fit in this general area as a small store, and so.
A really small one.
Well, I think so. I mean, looking at, again, ten years from now, if this were to combine with the other lot, we're just trying to keep our options.
Understood.
As open as possible.
Understood.
Shooting galleries, landscape contractors, a lot of what you listed have size constraints, and I think the one that stuck out to me was that department discount store.
Okay, well, when I think department store, I think of a Kohl's or something like that, and there's no way know-how there's one that's going to go on six-tenths of an acre. So if.
That would be the one I would ask you to reconsider.
I have no problems with that, gentlemen, if y'all don't. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think I would want to keep that one in, because it says including discount stores, because like a Dollar General's a smaller footprint, so.
I don't think it's big enough for a Dollar General, and they have enough parking. I really don't, so.
But then it wouldn't be a print.
Yeah.
It's up to you. Like I say, I can't make a motion, but first of all, we need a motion to approve, and then somebody want to add this as an amendment?
Steve, do we need to read all those again?
I was, I was going to suggest for the record, yes, for clarification with the motion.
Read them again.
One second.
I'm sorry? Go ahead.
And then also, it says Exhibit B at the top.
Yes.
Instead of, and the conditions reference Exhibit A, so.
Okay. The real Exhibit B. The ones that I marked were agricultural implement sales and service, retail appliances, bowling alleys, dance halls, department stores including discount stores, dry cleaning, and that's dry cleaning that has on-site machinery to do the dry cleaning, not a pickup. That's a different category. Funeral services and accessory crematory services, heating, air conditioning, and plumbing service repair, landscape contractor, engineering research and prototype development associated with offices, commercial truck driving school, shooting range, skating rinks, towing service. That's it. And it has nothing to do with the location in terms of usefulness, it has to do with the size of the parcel.
Self, did you read department store?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
And I think one of us can probably strike that if we.
If you wish. Yeah, I just read what I had.
Yeah, right. I think, I don't know if we need a motion for this, but I'd like to strike, keep department stores including discount stores on Exhibit A.
Well, we need, we need the motion for the, for the whole thing first.
Okay.
So let's, let's have a motion.
Let's do a motion to amend it.
Yes.
And then adopt it as amended. So the motion to amend will be the list that you gave, Mr. Self.
A motion to amend Exhibit A, or what are we amending?
Yes.
Exhibit A, yeah, yeah.
That's why we have a lawyer here, folks. Make sure we get it right.
And then you'll do a motion to amend the amendment.
Okay.
And we don't have to have a motion to change from Exhibit B to Exhibit A?
No.
No, that's just a typo. That's just a typo. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would move to amend Exhibit A. Okay.
Okay, so it is officially Exhibit A. Got it? Okay.
So Steve, do you want me to motion now to strike all those things?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So I would move to amend Exhibit A to strike agricultural implement sales and services, appliance and supplies retail, bowling alleys, dance halls, dry cleaning, operating, using the machinery on-site, funeral services and crematory services, heating, air conditioning, and plumbing service repair, and retail stores, landscaping contractor, engineering research and prototype development associated with offices, school, commercial truck driving, shooting range, skating rinks, and towing services.
Okay. We have a motion, need a second.
I second that motion and the motion to change from Exhibit B to Exhibit A. I second both, so we can vote for both, since he did make a motion, point of order.
Okay, we need to vote on them one at a time. First of all, let's vote on, let's vote on the whole list. And then if that passes, then if someone wants to make a motion to amend the amendment, then we will vote on that. And then we will vote on the motion-motion.
I know you're a stickler for order, so.
Absolutely. I got a lawyer watching me. Yes.
Sorry.
Yes, yes. Well, I need a second. Did I get a second?
I seconded.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Okay, now, you want to skip the, you want to skip amending the amendment?
No. I, I think I, sorry. I want to amend the amendment.
Okay.
And add in.
Delete from the line-out.
Delete from the cross-out.
Right.
The department stores to include discount stores.
Yes. Yeah, he wants to put that back, back in the acceptable list. Right. And I need a second for that.
No, we didn't cross it out.
You didn't? I'm sorry. Then we don't need that. I, I heard it, and I didn't.
I skipped that one.
Okay.
Oh.
Okay, so we're good.
I take that back.
It gets a little complicated sometimes, folks. Sorry about that.
You need some coffee.
You can check the tape, too.
We need some coffee. Okay, so now I need a motion for the amended motion. Amended resolution, I'm sorry.
Motion to pass the amended resolution.
Right.
PUD, PUD 25-3 as amended.
With the amended.
With the six attached.
And the amended Schedule A.
Conditions. And Schedule A.
Yeah.
And Schedule A.
Yes, with the amended Schedule A.
With the amended Exhibit A.
Exhibit A. Got it.
Mr. Chair, I'd second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Now you can read it again.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries for zero, and we're looking forward to seeing that specific site plan. Okay.
Please bring coffee when you come back for the Planning Department.
Moving right on, our second public hearing is PC 25-5.
This is case number PC 25-5, conditional use, on an application filed by Shiri Ram Chandra Mission, 3153 Lance Road, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45432. The applicant requests conditional use approval to allow for an addition to the existing meditation center. The property is further described as Book Five, Page Six, Parcel 197, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I feel that there's a crowd here making the presentation, so go right ahead. As many people as need to. No problem.
Hello, my name is Elise Graves. I just have a letter of intent to read, the addition of an extension to existing building, 3153 Lance Road, Beaver Creek, Ohio. An approval from the Planning Commission is requested for an addition of a fellowship hall and a residential-type kitchen, soft kitchen, to the existing meditation hall building. The multipurpose of this fellowship hall is to provide a space for spiritual and self-care workshops, children's activity. workshops, children's activities, yoga classes, and an eating area for attendees. The kitchen layout includes a basic range, an oven for minor cooking and warming of catering foods. It also includes a sink for washing dishes. This extension to the building will be used by existing attendees who come to the meditation center and will not require any additional parking on the property and will not have any impact on the traffic of Lance Road.
Thank you. Are, are y'all done?
I'm Whitney Locker. I'm with Alliance Engineering. I did the drawings for the addition. This building was added on to in 2014, I believe, around that time. And the addition that we are proposing, so that addition was for the meditation hall, the addition that we are proposing would be the same design that was put on in 2014, and this would be for the fellowship hall. And we would also be adding on the kitchen. The kitchen would follow the design more of the existing house. But as far as the fellowship hall goes, it would match the height of the meditation hall that was put on in 2014. All the materials and paint colors would match that addition as to blend it all together and make it appear as one building. I can answer any of your questions, any other questions you may have in regards to the building design.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Staff?
Thank you. Colin Carville, City Planner. So, we are here for this conditional use. It's a conditional use because the lot is zoned for residential. Churches are a conditional use, or places of religious assembly are a conditional use in those zoning districts, so any additions would require this conditional use that we're here for this evening. So, we're located at 3153 Lance Road, which is located on just roughly over seven acres. The two additions combined will total 3,432 square feet, and as mentioned, it will serve as the new kitchen, kitchen and kind of worship entertainment space for, for them. Just once again, to get our bearings here, on the west side of your screen, left side of the screen, is where we're at this evening. That highlighted parcel is where, where this religion, place of religious assembly is located. Just a more zoomed-in aerial of the lot that you were looking at earlier. Here is a look at the site plan itself. The blackened areas on the, on the screen, those represent kind of the additions that are being proposed. They meet all of our setback requirements for the R1A zoning district, so we're happy with that. Here's a first look at the building design. This is from the southern elevation. I believe the southern elevation's probably the most impacted by the addition. Those are the homes located on Waterhouse Drive. The worship area, as the applicant mentioned, is 21.5 feet tall. It's no taller than any other building, or the existing building that's, that's previously there. And all of the brick veneer, Eiffel shingles, smart siding will all kind of match what's existing, so it's a pretty, pretty seamless transition there. There's just a look at all the, the elevations from all different angles. So, we have the, the east, and then from the north, west, and then south on the bottom There's only one access point to this site, and that's to Lance Road to the north. The sanctuary between the two spaces, the, the worship center, and now this, this additional space. Seats roughly about 254 people. Zoning code requires one space per every three seats. 85 spaces would be required for that. The site already has 96 spaces with four handicap accessible spaces, so no accessible, no expansion to the parking lot is needed, nor was one provided in this submittal package. And just a couple of final items regarding this conditional use. Due to the size of this expansion, we're not requiring any stormwater management plan or calculations, and the final landscape plan will be reviewed and approved by the city. The city will be requiring a little bit more of a buffer to the south there. We're going to be requiring some more evergreen trees. Just a rough idea of what that'll look like, as indicated by those green, green blotches, just to cover up kind of that addition to the, to the south there. But that's just kind of the small last thing. That will be worked out with the landscape plan before approval of the zoning, zoning permit. So, we are recommending approval of this conditional use, subject to the seven conditions that I outlined in the resolution. Happy to answer any questions after the public hearing is closed.
Thank you very much. Now, the public hearing is open for this one. If anyone would like to speak in favor of, against, or simply ask questions, we will welcome your input.
Excuse me, 1423 Town Hall. I live at the southeast corner of this. These have been great neighbors. Absolutely no issue. But I would like to see, whoop, go back one, if you would, right there. Down there in the lower left-hand corner is a solid black line coming from a little black square. What's that solid black line?
Well, it's just a dimension.
I'm sorry?
That's just a dimension of how far we've been.
So, it's not a water drain or anything like that?
No.
Okay. Because the reason I asked that question, years ago, they tried to build on this lot, and we fought and fought and fought. That is a severe drainage problem off of it at times, so I don't see this adding to that. But any further work, there's going to be a drainage problem, and we're going to get heavily involved if there's any more water coming off that. Because at one time, they were going to put an eight-foot-deep detention pond on the east side going north and south above ground. Okay? So, it's absolutely ridiculous to say there's not a water drainage problem off that. But other than that, these have been great neighbors, no issue. They used to have a couple of parties every year, which I haven't noticed lately. But, no, there's no noise. It's, it's a nice group of people. And I've talked to a lot of the neighbors, and they all feel the same way.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll, we'll approach the drainage issue with staff once we've finished with the public hearing. Okay, others?
Just to address that, we have a detention.
Please, you need, you need to get up on TV here.
Just to address that, we have a retention pond on the site, so all our water goes to the retention pond and goes to the creek.
Is that, is that the...
The one you see circles over there?
In the upper right-hand corner?
Yes, that's, so we have a detention pond.
It's a, it's detention or retention?
No, retention. So, all the water goes there, which runs off from the parking lot or the building, and then it goes to the creek.
But it's not wet all the time?
No, it's not.
Okay, so it's a, it's a detention pond?
Detention, okay.
Took me years to keep them straight.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much. Others? Last chance. Okay, I will close the public hearing, but I will ask if we had any written input.
We did receive one email, and the commissioners each received a copy of it.
Thank you very much. I'm going to start on my right this time.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
I have a question for staff.
Yes, sir.
So, I, I see in the stormwater detention section of this report that the site does not require improvements to the current stormwater detention. Oh, sorry, I wasn't close enough. Can you hear me? All right, sorry. Has there been any testing or validation done to, to assume that the existing stormwater detention can accommodate this, this addition?
So, we'll, once we, before approval of, of the zoning permit, Engineering will take a look at, at the construction drawings and determine, make an ultimate final decision on that. But I spoke with Jeff, and he, he thought from the initial submittal package, that one wasn't, wasn't warranted here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Colin, before I ask my question relative to the small black square of the kitchen, we're in Phase 1 or Phase 2?
Of the...
For conditional use? Or can I ask some very detailed questions?
There aren't phases for conditional use. This is a, I'll catch all.
I just want to clarify. So, I have two or three questions relative to the kitchen.
Sure.
So, if you look at the plans submitted, which are very helpful, thank you for preparing those, it talks about the food service area or dining area is going to be about 112 people, just by my visual count, and the kitchen's a small black box in the lower-left corner of the site plan that's on the screen. So, to accommodate those people, unless it's all catered to order, we're going to be dealing with a kitchen exhaust, kitchen fan, kitchen noise situation. And I wondered, are there provisions in what we might want to have as a condition, since it's bordering, even if it is appropriate setback, bordering on residential homes for noise abatement, smell abatement, for the kitchen exhaust that's accommodating 112 people, possibly capacity, and what that would generate for that kitchen that would be buzzing to accommodate that kind of thing? Do we have that latitude with abatement issues towards the kitchen exhaust? Because it will have to have some kind of...
Yeah, so those aren't, those aren't specifically outlined in our zoning code, so we don't really have those standards to, to follow. I think it's more generic about noise pollution.
Are we, are we in our latitude to put a condition requiring noise and exhaust abatement from the kitchen exhaust system that will be set up? Or would that be a condition not privy to where we are at in our current process? Maybe that's, Steve, could you address that?
Yeah.
I'm just concerned for the impact on the residences downwind.
Yeah, but I guess based upon what the applicant said, is it's going to be one stove and, and catered food.
Okay. I just want to make sure you've got seating for 112 people.
Sure, I can add to that. So, we are, this is zoned for house, and right now, there's no kitchen at all. So, the kitchen we are putting in is just regular residential home kitchen.
Microwave.
We usually cater the food. Sometimes you need to warm it a little bit, so just regular, basically regular appliances. No commercial kitchen as of now. And the nearest house you see, the 100, it's at least 500 feet away, five or 600 feet away. So, it's a very large property, so I don't think any sound will go to that house that's of exhaust. If you put a big exhaust as well, it shouldn't go to any house nearby.
I was, yeah, my apologies. I was just going with the plans as you submitted them, sir, and you're showing a capacity of 112 people in the dining area. That's a fairly large crowd, even if everybody pops into the one microwave you're going to have in the room. And that's going to generate fumes, it's going to generate exhaust that have to come out of that little black square.
Right.
So, from an engineering standpoint, are we in our latitude at giving a condition that would require abatement issues for noise and our exhaust fumes, should that operate at capacity of 112 people all at one time?
I think the Health Department would have more jurisdiction over that, should they...
Thank you, sir.
Should they design a commercial kitchen, because what they're saying they're putting in there right now is going to be at a much lower level. If they want a complete commercial kitchen, then there are going to be a lot of other restrictions they're going to have to comply with.
All right.
Including commercial exhaust and ventilation and lots of things.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Colin, one other question relative, and then I'll be done, Mr. Chairman. Relative to that kitchen issue we keep bringing up because of the capacity of the design, to the right of the big rectangle where those two little trees are is the play area for children, and that is currently unfenced, wide open for obvious uses, very beneficial I'm sure. Once that food, whether it's catered, microwave, or whatever, is in operation, the capacity is going to be focused on that area just to the west of the children's play area. Would there be any requirements in, according to the conditions that the landscape planning and whatever, that we might want to add some kind of a visual barrier to the kitchen area from the toddler area, which, without walking up to the screen, if you look to the lower-right-hand corner of the big rectangle, you'll see the two tree outlines. Just to the right of that is the children's play area. I don't know what capacity they are going to have, but that's exactly what I'm thinking of for also the right-hand side. If you look where the two trees are, to the lower right of those two trees is the children's play area, and I'm concerned with an operable kitchen, even if it is non-commercial, as the applicant has explained, that there could be a, children wander, children move all around, and now we've got a fruit production situation going on for over 100 people. And could that be a compromise of safety, unless there's at least a visual barrier that we might want to add in the landscape provision?
So, you're, you're envisioning...
They don't show the children's play area in there, but it's to the, to the southeast, to the lower right of those two trees that you see in the lower right rectangle.
Okay.
And it's, it's just like one of our parks, only there's no fencing or anything around it. It's just there.
Sure. I, I think it's more, that play area is more accessory than anything, so I, I don't think it's, from a staff's perspective, I don't think it's a major concern.
It is. You're absolutely correct. I'm just, one of the things we're doing here in this commission, this is to point out things that we see, and now you're adding a possible 100 more people in a focused area. And children tend to, with people in the room, they're wanting to associate with family members, and there's kitchens and aromas and aromas that are coming out. I'm just trying to anticipate usages of the site that could easily be resolved with additional landscaping as correctly shown on this scheme.
Yeah, I don't think at this time, staff would require that, but if, if the fellow board members would want that, certainly something that the board can entertain.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Colin. Those are my questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I was actually on Planning Commission when we approved the, the first addition in 2014, and I remember the drainage came up then, and I believe that's when the, that detention pond was, was installed. So, if the engineer, our engineer says it's sized for the additional impervious space, if the engineer says it's good, it's good. He's pretty good about this. So, I think, I think we're good on that. And as one of our applicants pointed out, this is a, this is a residential kitchen. It's not the kind of kitchen you would expect to see at a church. Our church has a huge commercial kitchen, and that's not what this is. So, I don't, I don't really see it as a problem.
And it definitely isn't by the size of the kitchen, the square alone is too small. But the room does seat 112 people, and they're going to be there for something.
Right. Understood. Well...
If it was 30 people, but 112 has caused me to think.
Well, it's the sense of the, sense of the commission, so that's all I have. So, do we have a second helping, is anybody?
Yeah, I have one. Mr. Chairman, I want to know if now is the appropriate time. I would like to amend condition number three on landscape to reflect more of what we're seeing, if this would be appropriate before we make the motion. Condition number three talks about a landscape plan. I would like to add a sentence to that existing number three. And the sentence number three would, would read, "With specific attention to the southern and eastern side of the addition."
Kitchen addition or...
The 112 people, the large rectangle. "With specific attention to the southern and eastern side of the addition."
So, you were referring to the...
Additional sentence.
Additional sentence to...
I really, yeah, I want to phrase what we're seeing already and add it to the right-hand side, and how would I say that in as few words as possible, so it doesn't box our planning department in.
Well, would you say with specific...
Sorry. Just say with, with specific, specific look at the area to the south...
Southeast and south.
East, no. Is that southeast?
Yeah, southeast and south.
Southeastern part of the, the southeastern corner of the addition, of the main addition. Is that what you want?
You gave me a good point. Let the sentence, I'll try this, Melissa.
I have a question real quick. By, by approval by the Planning and Development Department, that's staff, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Should we let them give their final, I mean, they'll...
Which is why I don't want to box it in, say that you must have that.
Yeah.
I'm trying to leave him some latitude to our reflection.
Well, I think, I think staff, I think staff knows that we're interested in it, so if you want to, to leave it up to staff, I'm sure they, they know the sense of the, of the commission, that we want that looked at.
Yeah, that's why I was just going to add a simple sentence, "With specific attention to the south and southeast corner of the addition."
Okay.
You got it. Whoever is drawing it now, thank you, Randy.
That would be Melissa.
Oh, it's Randy's drawing on the screen, that's why. For the people at home and watching on TV.
Would you make more sense just to say, "With specific attention to the southern property line"? Is that what you're really talking about?
Well, I'm trying to cover both the property line and the children's play area. The children's play area is to the east of the red circle that Randy Burkett just drew, southeast of the additional property.
But not the southeast property line?
No.
Correct.
Yeah, so I think...
So, that's why I left the property line out.
You need to distinguish, because the way I heard the motion was the eastern property line.
Southeast vicinity of the addition.
Of the furthest corner of the addition.
Correct.
Furthest eastern corner, for eastern and southern.
Southeastern corner of the addition.
Corner of the addition. That's what you're saying.
Okay.
I didn't mean to have it legal to you, Melissa, so.
I have great confidence in Melissa's ability to get it coherent.
But I know Randy and Colin will take care of it.
All right.
So, you have a...
What I make a motion to add, sir. Motion to add that sentence.
We have a motion there, and I need a second.
To the third condition.
Can you read it?
Okay, so I have a final landscape plan shall be reviewed and approved by the Planning and Development Department prior to the release of a zoning permit with specific attention to the southeast corner of the addition site.
Yeah, it's both south.
Yeah, it'd be both the south and southeast.
South and southeast.
Yes.
South, southeast.
So, we're seconding that motion, and we're...
Well, I'm asking for a second.
All right, I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. You want to do that by raising hands, gentlemen? Call a roll? Call the roll.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes, please.
Mr. Jones?
I'm going to say no. I'm going to defer these for Planning and Development.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Mr. Self?
No.
We try.
Okay, now, now, yes, please.
So, this did bring up something, though. So, Colin, if you have...
Folks, this is grassroots government at its best.
So, you did say in our packet that staff has proposed a condition requiring a line of evergreen trees to be planted?
Yeah.
Where's that condition?
So, we thought with keeping that third part of the resolution broad, that would kind of catch all there.
So, you're just including that line of evergreen?
Yep, exactly. I didn't want to call it out specifically in there, just to box them in.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, now, I would like a motion for our resolution as it currently stands.
Motion to approve PC 25-5 conditional use with resolution with the seven attached conditions.
Okay, I have a motion.
Mr. Chad, second?
And I have a second.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries 4-0, and we will be looking forward to seeing that new addition. Glad you all are here. Okay, one more item, gentlemen and audience. We have a, oh, well, this is a lot split, S 25-4.
All right, so we have a subdivision here, a lot split. It's titled "The Farm Phase Two." I don't know the background on that, but that's what we're calling it. So, just to get your bearings, we are on the corner of Shaker Town and Grange Hall Road. The lot itself is 23.8984 acres. They are proposing to split this into three separate parcels. Parcel one is 5.0123 acres. Parcel two is 5.0095 acres. And parcel three, the largest one of the bunch, is 13.8766 acres. It is currently zoned A1 agriculture. All parcels will remain zoned A1 agriculture. I did my homework before this. I've just checked our land use plan. It's all in a, it calls for low-density residential in that area. So, that might be subject to change once we finalize our land use plan at the end of the year. But that's kind of what it's, our land use plan currently calls for, for any type of development if we see in this area. So, just giving you a look at that parcel look here. So, the larger, largest of the three is to the north, with the two smaller ones broken up to the south there. Standard boilerplate conditions, approval on, with the plan stamped June 17th, and the other two we've seen in most of our subdivisions here. Staff is recommending approval with the listed conditions. So, happy to answer any questions that we have. I don't think the engineer's here this evening, so we can try our best with that.
I'm just going to throw this open, gentlemen. Anybody have any questions or comments? I've got one quick one, if you all, do you have something? I'm sorry.
That's right.
I didn't mean to jump on you.
No, I just had one question for city, or Colin. If you could put the site, I'm going with my Google, because I was looking for more of a vicinity map. It's clearly a farm, and they're subdividing it. And that makes me think, because of their, it might have been owned or be owned by Bethel Christian, but it's clearly an area that's distinctly separate. And if that's true, can we assume that they're dividing it for future use of some mean or shape, or whatever their purview is, because they own the land? But would that mean that, since this is now zoning, that we have to take certain things into consideration, knowing that it's being subdivided for some future use? Do we want to talk about that use now? Or do we just wait till they do something?
We are more reactionary as a department, so we don't really know. They haven't expressed any intentions for the property. I just know that this was kind of their first step, since it's been sitting for a while. So, I think it's probably best to just wait and react to what they come up with and what they approach us with.
Yeah, the only reason I mention is because of the senior area behind it, which is to the right of the blue square. That's high-income, high-developed, and it's, they might begin the process, especially with public hearings coming, to say, "Why didn't you let us know at the beginning?"
Sure.
"That this was coming." And it, does it behoove us, or are we, like you said, in the first step, and we just let it happen?
Right. If a rezoning were to take place, they'd be properly notified. So, that would be the more appropriate time to speak on that.
Yeah, thank you. That was my question, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. No questions?
Don't run off. Just a quick question. The parcel that really surrounds the Bethel Church now on three sides, that's the city-owned, that new big detention pond, is it not? I don't know. I don't think so.
I have to get my camera time whenever I can.
Yeah, there you go. Even if you didn't get the memo about the light blue jacket today.
Well, I saw you guys, and I ran down and got my light blue coat. Now, the one to the north, if that's where you're asking?
Yes.
That is part of a 54-acre. If you combine that one and the property just to the east, those are two properties that are owned by the city currently.
Okay.
And we're working on a project for that property.
Right. Back in the back, though, is where that new, that large detention pond is.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, it's just off to the north of this aerial photo. And with the creation of the two five-acre lots, just because we create the lot doesn't mean the zoning changes. So, it's still A1. The only uses that they can do, unless they came in for a rezoning, would be all those that you can do on an A1. And if you pull back the survey record, you can see the dotted line to the middle of that. That denotes a creek that runs through the middle of the property. So, particularly the one that's to the east, it would be challenging to do much with that in terms of improvements on the other side, unless you invest a lot of money in building a bridge over the creek.
Right.
And that's kind of why, to the east of the Leo Brown property, the Traditions property, they own that. But there's, it's just a big vacant property, because that was like phase three of the duplexes. But the cost of the bridge is prohibitive until they really get a full build-out. It was the last phase. And so, I would envision the same for this eastern parcel of the five-acre lot.
I go by that intersection many times a week, and for a long time, there was a sign that says, "Future site of Bethel Christian Church."
Yeah.
And so, apparently, they are not going to build a church there.
No, the intent, from what we understand, is they're retaining the 13 acres to the north. They just didn't have use for the full 25 acres.
Right, okay. So, everything remains the same, except it's now three lots instead of one, so.
Right. No uses could be any different.
This is one of Tom Poliquin's famous no-brainers.
Right.
Okay, any second helpings, gentlemen? Okay, then I need a motion, please.
Motion to approve S 25-4 with the three attached conditions.
Mr. Chad, second?
I have a motion and a second. And let's make it official and read the list.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries 4-0. And gentlemen, if we have nothing else...
Mr. Chad, move to adjourn.
I have a motion.